Ned.
I'm good.
Sam. Freeze him. Everybody's good? Great. We live?
Yeah.
We are live. The Prisel Township High School regular meeting of the Board of Education will now come to order on June eighth, two thousand twenty-one at five forty-nine P. M. Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly.
President.
Mrs. Medina. Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Ms. Grant here, Mr. Baltirus.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Alexander.
Here.
You have a form.
Great, can I get a motion to retire to executive session for the purposes of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity; however, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation for a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act. Five I L C S one twenty slash two, see one. Also collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Five I L C S one twenty slash two, see two. And litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Five I L C S one twenty slash two, see eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patterson.
Aye.
Ms. Grant. Aye. Mr. Baltirus.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Medina. Ms. Patterson. Mr. Alexander.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We are in executive session at five fifty-one P. M.
I guess, yeah, I'm saying is everyone ready and I'm not. Are we live?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, that's what you, that's what you get when you check on everybody and study yourself. Good evening, Proviso.
Good evening.
Can I get a motion to reconvene the regular meeting of the Proviso Township High School Board of Education? Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Uh, Mr. Valteres.
Aye.
Mr. Wagner.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly.
Aye.
This is Medina. This is Patterson. Ms. Grant, aye, Mr. Alexander.
Aye.
Uh, we are.
Great. Can we all please stand for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grant, can you please read the vision statement?
Through expectations of excellence and by providing equitable educational opportunities to empower each student, our graduates are prepared for college, careers, and to serve as contributing members of a dynamic global society.
Any citizens' comments at this time?
Uh, I have been told that we can may not have any citizens' comments at all tonight.
Woo!
Which was very...
Wow. Okay, next on the agenda is FOIA report.
Yes.
FOIA report. In May of 2021, Proviso Township High School District 209 received the following FOIA requests. On May 7th, 2021, Antoinette Gray requested copies of any and all 12-year tax increment financing extensions that were granted and/or extended to any and all Proviso Township communities, municipalities, and/or villages for the years 2015, 2016, 2017, 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Information was provided. That concludes the FOIA report.
Thank you. At this time, if it pleases the board, we are going to make an adjustment on our agenda so that we can recognize some incredible individuals who have taken their time on this evening to grace us with their presence. Uh, if it pleases the board, Dr. Henderson, I would like for what is usually included in your report, and that is the acknowledgement of our scholars and, and the reason that we're all here to be moved forward so that they don't have to suffer through my president's report at the same time. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, board president.
Good evening, good evening.
Vice president, secretary, board members.
Good evening.
The real reason we're here is to celebrate and educate our scholars. This evening, we have the pleasure of recognizing some of the best and brightest in Proviso. And we are so happy to have you here this evening. So let me get started with recognizing our valedictorian from Proviso East, Ms. Cynthia Martinez. Will you please come forward, Cynthia? Ms. Martinez graduated with a GPA of 4.875.
Wow.
She is heavily involved in various clubs and activities, including but not limited to managing the boys' wrestling team.
Wow.
Participating in JV and varsity soccer, assisting with student council and the yearbook club, and president of our school's National Honor Society. She will be attending Elmhurst College right here in this area. Congratulations to the valedictorian.
Cynthia Martinez is graduate number one in her class and has a promille of qualifications general of 4.875. She is very well-encouraged in various clubs and activities, including, among others, the management of the youth's football team. She participated in the second and first team of football. She assisted in the student club and the library club. She was the president of the National Honor of our school. She will attend the Elmhurst in the autumn of 2021.
The plaque reads, let me make sure you all see that plaque, beautiful black and gold. I'm not gonna say that too many more times.
Please don't.
The Proviso High School District 209 Board of Education recognizes Cynthia Martinez in honor of excellence and academic achievement. Proviso East High School, valedictorian class of 2021, presented on this date, June 8th, 2021. Nothing but the best. Congratulations.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Dr. Hardy.
Yeah. Is it Eve?
Yes, yes.
Dr. Hardy?
Yeah.
Could you come forward? Thank you. I found it's not there, four. Hey, I found it's not there, four. Thank you.
Now we would like to recognize our salutatorian from Proviso East, Luis Naves. Luis graduated with a GPA of 4.64. He was a member of the Proviso East National Honor Society and recipient of the Pullman Foundation Guaranteed Carney Book Award, Edna Academic Award, and the Community Financial Need Ozone. He will attend Dominican University in the fall. Congratulations.
Luis Naves is graduate number two in his class and has a promille of qualifications general of 4.64. He was a member of the National Honor of Proviso East and recently was a recipient of the following recognitions: Fundación Omen, the award for the book of Gary P. Carney, the academic Edna, and the Edna for financial need of the community. He will attend the University of Dominican in the autumn of 2021. He has plans for a career in academia.
And this plaque reads the same. The Proviso Township High School District 209 Board of Education recognizes Louis Naves in honor of excellence and academic achievement. Proviso East High School, valedictorian, class of 2021, presented on this date, June 8th, 2021. Nothing but the best. Now we would like to recognize our valedictorian from Proviso West High School, Jacqueline Moreno. Ms. Moreno graduated with a GPA of 4.616. Jacqueline will attend Illinois Western University this fall. She will major in Biology and Neuroscience. She will continue to participate in soccer and other science-based extracurricular activity along with completing research under a professor at the university. Jacqueline aspires to be a Navy doctor.
Jacqueline Moreno is graduate number one in her class and has a promille of qualifications general of 4.616. Jacqueline will attend the University of Washington this autumn. Her specialty is anthropology and neuroscience. She will continue participating in football and other extracurriculars based in science. Other than completing the research with a professor at the university, Jacqueline aspires to be a doctorate of medical.
The plaque reads the same. The Proviso Township High School District 209 Board of Education recognizes Jacqueline Moreno in honor of excellence and academic achievement. Proviso West High School, valedictorian, class of 2021, presented on June 8th, 2021. Nothing but the best. Our salutatorian from Proviso West, Scott Guerra, graduated number two with an overall GPA of 4.4. She has She has accepted a management position, and she will be matriculating at Loyola or DePaul University this fall. She aspires to be in architecture.
Scott Guerra is graduated number two and has a promedio of qualifications general of 4.4. She accepted a directorial position. She will matriculate at Loyola or DePaul in the autumn of 2022. She aspires to be in architecture.
Now, we would like to recognize, next we have, from Proviso Math and Science Academy, Ms. Ivriana Neal. Ms. Neal graduated as a distinguished research scholar with an overall GPA of 4.810. Her research mentorship project was, does my skin color define me? An analysis of how racial profiling and stereotyping actions affect Black youth ages 15 to 29. Ivriana was very involved, and I can attest to that, Ivriana was the co-president for the superintendent's roundtable. Very involved in multiple extracurricular activities, including the superintendent's roundtable, co-president, the National Honor Society, class of 2021, president, the Proviso Township Youth Ambassador, to name a few. She's currently participating in the Bellwood Police Department internship program and is trained to be a community service officer. Ivriana will be attending Spelman College in the Atlantic Door. And your plaque reads, the Proviso Township High School District 209 Board of Education recognizes Ivriana Neal in honor of excellence and academic achievement. Proviso Math and Science Academy Research Scholar, class of 2021, presented on this date, June 8th, 2021. We expect nothing but the best. We would also like to recognize tonight Chef Keith Morrison and our scholars from Proviso East in the Culinary Arts Program. Nine Proviso East scholars received OSHA certification this year, and fourteen scholars earned a Safe Service Certification through the culinary program. Each scholar that passed the Safe Service Certification exam will receive a City of Chicago license as well. The group is Proviso East First, so we are very, very proud of them. Again, we want to recognize Chef Keith Morrison, our culinary arts teacher, and we extend heartfelt thank you to Principal Dr. Patrick Hardy for supporting our scholars. All certificates will be sent to each recipient. Board, we are also pleased to announce that the Illinois Student Assistant Commission recognized thirty-one of our scholars this year from Proviso East High School, Proviso Math and Science Academy, and Proviso West High School. These scholars join Illinois high school students across the state who have been named 2021-22 state scholars for their outstanding academic achievement. Our thirty-one Proviso Township High School students, scholars, will receive their certificate by mail. Congratulations to them. We would like to recognize our very own STEM CTE program under the leadership of Ms. Antonette Rayburn. Our scholars completed the STEM program facilitated by the Network of Black Association and East alum from US Cellular. At the end of the program, the scholars were given an essay prompt and asked to respond. The prize was a new Apple laptop computer. Although there were several scholars that excelled and showed great leadership, the winner was Juan Carlos Murch from PMSA, Proviso East scholar Gabriel Gabriel Matton. Essay received an honorable mention by US Cellular. We would like to honor and recognize both scholars.
Our scholars completed STEM, CTE, and bajo liderazgo of the señora Antonette Rayburn. Nuestros estudiantes completaron el programa STEM, patrocinado por el Red de Asociados Negros, y graduados de Proviso East de Juasalde. Al fin del programa, los estudiantes recibieron un tema de escribir, y se les pidió que respondieran. El premio fue una nueva apuntada portátil de agua, aunque hubo varios estudiantes que sobresalió y mostró gran liderazgo. El ganador fue Juan Carlos Marchán de Piama C. El tema de escribir de Proviso East, Gabriel Matton, recibió una pensión de honor de Juasalde. Nos gustaría honrar y reconocer a ambos estudiantes.
And finally, this evening, we would like to recognize our teachers and administrators for their hard work with the summer STEAM program or initiative. STEAM as in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. All of the recipients will be honored and receive their official award at the October Regional Meeting at the DePlains Valley Regional. However, I'd like to take a moment to recognize and thank our teachers, Danielle English, Jennifer LaBosch, Michelle Lucas-Dunkins from Proviso West, and Monique Ballard from Proviso East. Again, they will receive their official Best Practice Award for the Proviso Summer STEAM Program at the DDR Fall College Alliance Best Practices Conference. Also tonight, we are honoring Dr. Nicole Howery and Ms. Rayburn with plaques from DDR for their work with the STEM Initiative. Will you all please come forward? And as you all know, both of these ladies will be leaving us this year. And again, we just want to thank you for all of your hard work, Ms. Rayburn and Dr. Howard. We thank you so very much for all of your hard work. Thank you. I'm sorry. Cynthia Martinez, are you still here? Will you come back up, honey? We need to take this picture again, I'm sorry.
Thank you, staff. And give these scholars, teachers, staff, and especially the parents, another round of applause, please. Thank you. On behalf of the board, I want to thank the parents and the caregivers for greatly supporting and making sure that we were able to be successful as a district by engaging and doing those things that we as a district just can't do. We thank you, we acknowledge you, we appreciate all of your hard work, and we're so thankful for the harvest that you're experiencing tonight because of that. We look for nothing but the best from you scholars and look forward to seeing you in the district, in the community, and in your future endeavors, maybe on some newsreels and doing some great things. So thank you once again for reminding us all why we're doing this type of work. Thank you. At this point in the agenda, we have the president's report, and I would like to entertain a motion that we amend the agenda and move item I Superintendent's Contract above my report. Oh, I'm sorry. Scratch that motion, scratch that motion. Ms. Kelly, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have Mr. Gale, Mr. Brandon Gale. He's retiring. Will you please come forward, Mr. Gale? Put your hands together for Mr. Gale. We want to thank you for all of your years of service. You've been a great employee, and we really appreciate you. And we wanted to just give you a little something, a little token of appreciation. Would you ladies bring it forward, please?
Thank you.
And I would like to thank the Board of Education. Thank you, Dr. Henderson, especially Ms. Kelly. We go way back just being here and listening. And thank you for all that you've done over the years that I've been here.
Thank God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna get up because it's gonna be easier for Nicole to take the picture.
There you go.
Squeeze in. On the ends, please. Ms. Medina, can you squeeze in?
One more, hold that one.
Thank you. Now we're back on point. Make a motion that we amend the agenda to move the Superintendent's Contract under the consent agenda, fourteen I, to right before the next order of business, which is the communication from the board president.
Can you repeat that?
Make a motion to amend the agenda to remove the Superintendent's Contract under fourteen I to set agenda forward to the position of the agenda right now. Revote? Motion from the floor?
Do you want to move it up for the reporting communication?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
Are we pulling all items?
No. I'm making a motion that we move item fourteen I to the agenda, item next, right before the president's report.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Bautieris?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Make a motion that we approve Superintendent's Contract.
Can I make a motion to table that now?
I will allow your motion to precede my motion, even though I have to jump on the mic. Yes, you can make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion to table the consent agenda for that we just pull, which is to pull fourteen I and table it for further discussion. It's already been pulled, you're just tabling it. Correct. I'm just reiterating.
Motion from the floor?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Ms. Medina?
Aye.
Ms. Patterson?
Nay.
Ms. Grant?
Aye.
Mr. Bautieris?
May.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Ms. Kelly?
Nay.
Mr. Alexander?
Nay.
What should it be?
Can I get a motion to approve Superintendent's Contract with the corrections to said contract that discussed with legal in closed session?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Kelly?
No, no, let it go.
Okay. Ms. Medina and Ms. Kelly?
This contract is not mirror in any way, shape, or form any of the actions that we've taken with prior superintendents. It's an excess amount of money, and we don't have any documentation to substantiate any of the points from the previous contract or any data points whatsoever presented to substantiate such a raise and to give a five-year contract. There are no metrics at all, and I think that the amount of money being put on this contract is unacceptable.
Why don't you take it, Ms. Kelly, on the floor?
I would like to take this time to say a few things. This has been a rough year, two year and a half for everyone. Lives have changed, the way we work, the way we interact, the way we share information, and the way we teach have all been changed. While some things have changed, one thing that remains the same, and I believe I can say this for everyone involved, board members, community, staff, et cetera. The one thing that remains constant is our pursuit of educational success and excellence for all of our students. In order to do this, we need to have an education-focused superintendent with a strategic plan to move our district away from educational mediocrity into a place where educational opportunities move our district thrive, excuse me, into a place where educational opportunities thrive. A place where achievement is the norm. Success is the goal, and excellence is the prize. I do my due diligence, I vote my conscience, and I speak my mind. Normally, I do not vote to approve five-year contracts. But this year and a half has been anything but normal. And I truly believe that having and keeping stability in District 209 is more important than having a hard-line stance on five-year contracts. Based on where District 209 currently stands, I believe Dr. Henderson is the right person to move this district forward and should be given the opportunity to see his strategic plan through the five years requested. I've had extensive conversations with him, and I've witnessed his work in the district. He is determined to raise the academic levels and is focused on ensuring our students have the tools they need to reach their greatest potential. With this extension, we are allowing stability in this key leadership position long-term while continuing our commitment to financial stability and pursuit of academic excellence. And ever since I've been on this board, if you've been at the meetings or if you've heard me, you know that I've always said, and I always say, that I want to see the Proviso schools put back on the mantle, high upon the mantle where they used to be. And that is my belief, and that is what I've been striving for ever since I've been on this board. At this time, I do believe that Dr. Henderson will take us there. I'm willing to give him the five-year contract so that we can move this district forward. We will have stability for our children, and we will have stability in the school district and the community so that we can move Proviso schools forward and be high upon the mantle again where we used to be and recognized and able to compete with all of our surrounding schools. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any other discussion?
Yes.
The other floor.
Before we give the contract, we have not gotten an education plan. Or to see that the education plan that was given is can even be provided to be successful. This superintendent has put English language learners in special education again and has taken in a majority Latino district, put the ELL director that we had, fired him, and that program has now been dissolved. There's no transparency in hiring. We're not, we don't have a process any longer that we're following. Several of his friends have been hired. And I believe that without a true tried and true process and procedure for hiring and for interviewing people, that needs to happen before, and that's actually one of his goals, and it hasn't been met. We've shown time and time again that there hasn't been respect for the teachers. During the pandemic, there was discourse for the tech support for the teachers, for administrators, who put their lives on the line and who got everything, who did the groundwork for our students to be successful this year. And as an educational leader, you need to inspire all of your faculty. And that's not what's happening right now. There is no inspiration for our faculty. And it's crucial because they're the ones, without our teachers and without the administrators, that are the ones that are boots-on-the-ground, putting everything forward, our technical people, who have done everything possible to get the children out. I don't see how this could even be being presented. There's no data given when asked. I'm consistently asked after board meetings and told things are going to be provided. There's never any information, I've not once received a response from Dr. Henderson. Every time he said that he's going to email it, he doesn't email it. And I think that the discourse that has been posted on our district about a board member and a parent and given permission by this superintendent is completely inappropriate.
Point taken, Ms. Medina.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Patterson.
I pretty much echo much of what Mrs. Kelly said. I was truly the champion of not offering a five-year contract. But what I did is I reached out to some former superintendents for District 209. And as we, because it was more than three, talked, we chuckled about how there was not stability in District 209. And we calculated the amount of time that each superintendent had been in this district. And the amount of time that they spent in the district was just unacceptable. You cannot have stability if you start and stop. And that's what this district had been notorious for. I will leave you with this quote. "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." And that's what Martin Luther King said. And I will leave it as said. I really want to go somewhere else, but I won't.
Thanks, Ms. Patterson. Mr. Gleason, follow me on this. For purposes of transparency, is it okay to discuss the changes that we made to the contract or that we suggested so that Dr. Henderson can hear them and the public can hear them as related to the vacation days? Can we state that?
You can say what the number is going to be, that's fine.
Exactly. Dr. Henderson, while you were not in closed session, there was a typo on page eight, item number ten, as it relates to vacation. It said the superintendent shall receive fifty workdays. We understand that that should have been twenty-five. We amended that. And it also says that you were able to, permitted to have, agreement shift late show never be permitted to have more than sixty days of vacation accrued at any time. We understood that to be thirty-five days and made that correction. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Motion's on the floor, discussion's been had. Ms. Grant?
Discussion.
Discussion, Sam Metar.
You know, sometimes we all have our opinion about different subjects, different matters, but the facts is what counts most of the time, actually all of the time. So, Mr. Gleason, can I actually read some of the goals and the indicators?
Absolutely.
So there's three goals. Goal number one, the superintendent should be responsible for the improvement of student performance and academic achievement. It's in the last three pages, part of exhibit A. There's eight indicators, I'll read one of them. The superintendent shall, with the assistance of administrative staff, faculty, parent profession, and the outside resources that's appropriate, implement a student testing program which will provide step-to-date for identifying student academic needs and for gauging student academic growth. This program should be fully implemented by 2020, 2021, and should be specifically designed to improve student academic growth, graduation rates, and college readiness for all students. There's eight, there's seven more. Goal number two, the superintendent should be responsible for ensuring the financial stability and well-being of the district and shall institute measures to ensure the efficiency and efficient the efficiency and efficient operation of the district. There's fourteen indicators, I'll read one of them. The superintendent shall, with the assistance of the administrative staff and faculty, provide data and analysis data related to district finances to the Board of Education at monthly board meetings. Goal number three, the superintendent shall provide leadership to the district to improve parent-community involvement. There's nine indicators of success. And I'll read one of them. The superintendent shall actively seek out parent and community involvement for informed policy and budget decisions by holding forums. Yes? Surveys and information sessions throughout the school year. So there's actually three goals. One of them, like I said, goal three has nine indications of success. Goal fourteen has fourteen indications of success. And goal three has eight indications of success. So like I said, the facts speak for themselves as part of the contract. It's there.
Thank you, Sam. Any other discussion?
So I just want to say that I have a lot of respect. I mean, that's not even... I don't know, I don't think there are words to say how much respect I have for Dr. Henderson and his leadership through an immensely difficult and challenging time in a very difficult and challenging environment. And I think that to do your work in that environment has really put you in a really difficult situation. And I really honor and respect the work that you've done. In our personal conversations, I feel that you were able to elaborate your vision with me in such a way that I'm inspired and I can see what's going to unfold in the next years. I voted to table the contract because I felt it would be helpful for the board to maybe have a session with you to really, and we're about to have a retreat and talk about vision, mission, goals, a long-term plan for the future of the district. And I just, I feel like that would have been beneficial to have that conversation prior to voting on the contract. But that was voted down, so I'm looking forward to the day when you're, when you tell me in person is going to be, is going to show up in the world for everyone to see. And I'm confident that great things are going to happen.
Any other discussion? Okay, for the record, I would just like to thank the board for their continued diligence and honesty as we do not make these decisions lightly. But consistency has always been my thing on this board, and I believe what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I tend to also believe that in order to affect any real change, you need consistency. You need some type of stability. And as Dela stated, and these are just facts, that this district is at a turnaround of superintendents at a rate that I don't see how anyone could expect any type of success to come out of that. If every two or so years, you're changing the leader of the district, then how can you get any traction towards any programs or anything that's going to be real for our students? Doesn't take long, or it didn't take long, for us to see Dr. Henderson's work and value and experience once he arrived at this district. The fact is that he began to be attacked hours after he was hired by all seven of us. These are not normal circumstances. We are in a worldwide pandemic where he not only had to risk his health to come up here and try to get employment, which was his choice, we understand that, but he still did it. He offered to come in here and do for us what not too many other superintendents have ever been able to do. And he's done that in spades within ten months. It's been all wins. So the facts are what matters, and I agree with Sam said. You can have all of the conspiracy theories and innuendos and lies and mistruths and stuff, but the work has been done. These are just facts. They're just facts. And I would like to thank the community again for seeing that vision and understanding it because a couple of months ago, you allowed us to sit up here, four of us, once again for four more years unopposed. That doesn't just happen. And if people think that that's just because it was a pandemic, then you're grossly mistaken because thousands of people came out and voted in lieu of there being a pandemic. This community understood that in order for us to continue to move this district forward, that we needed congruency and consistency with board members that have a proven track record of doing so within just four years. So all we're doing, Dr. Henderson, is paying it forward. We're just paying it forward and ensuring this community that while we sit up here, we will listen and we will be consistent in everything that we do as it relates to the success of our scholars. With that being said, Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Medina?
Nay.
Mrs. Patterson?
Aye.
Ms. Grant, nay. Mr. Bautieras?
Aye.
Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the president's report. Once again, congratulations, Dr. Henderson. We appreciate you, sir. Moving on to the president's reports. Thank you just isn't really enough. I want to thank the staff. I mean, May was a really powerful month. We really did some things, and it really amazed me as I moved around the district and watched the staff and the administrators and the teachers and everyone prepare our scholars for graduation and all the things that had to transpire. The continued testing and vaccination of our scholars along with our staff, the continued following of science in lieu of the education process is no small feat. This is not normal business as usual. Not only did we have to educate Dr. Henderson, we have to make sure that our kids and our staff were safe and that our environments were conducive to making sure that the educational process could go forward. And you guys did that in spades, and I want to thank you. And this board thanks you, and this community thanks you for not only successfully getting these scholars across the finish line, but for doing it safely in once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. We should not be little. The situation that we just come through, nothing has been normal. Ms. Kelly said it, nothing has been normal. Lives have been changed forever. We've lost people. And yet and still, you all still came to work, still provided for our scholars, still provided nothing but the best, all the way up to including an almost perfect graduation. And I'll get there in a minute. I want to thank the staff for an incredible staff and teachers' recognition picnic and retirement picnic. You know, improvisation is something that you got to have. You got to be, I call it walking and chewing gum, Dr. Henderson. You can't let one thing really get you off your mark. Barriers and obstacles, we call it effective effort and grit with our students. But even when we model that as staff and administration and a board, it speaks volumes. It's easy to tell children what to do, but it's a lot better when you can show them through your actions, because I believe children are visual learners and they follow what we do versus what we say. The presentation was nothing but the best. Once again, under the conditions of this pandemic, we did not let that deny our staff and our retirees their day and their acknowledgement of the work that they've done for this district. And I was there, and I saw the smiles on their face and the appreciation that they had, that we still managed to do something for them in the midst of social distancing and mask-wearing and a deadly pandemic. Thank you, staff, once again for that. Then we had the unfortunate loss of one of our stellar employees, Mr. Antoine Snake Peters. And I attended his funeral at Vizel West and saw staff volunteering. For the record, staff showed up to assist in the home-going of Mr. Peters and did not request any pay. Dr. Henderson, is that correct?
That's correct.
Volunteered their time to make sure that the family saw the appreciation and consideration that we had for Mr. Antoine Snake Peters. It was nothing but the best. Top-notch services were provided to that family to make them feel welcomed and make them know that they were loved and appreciated and prayed for and thought of during their time of bereavement. Another win.
Are you going to be doing the same for the teacher that just passed?
Excuse me, Mrs. Medina. It is very disrespectful to interrupt the president during the president's report, ma'am. We have new business when you could ask that question, ma'am. I would just ask for some decorum and respect, that's all. That's all. Thank you. Your graduation. Now, I'm not going to cry. But this class of 2021 is special to me. And it's very special to four of us sitting up here. Because this class that we just watched walk across the stage were freshmen while we were freshmen on this board. For those of you who do not know, the class of 2017 and '18 was our freshman class. I was elected in 2017 and '18. And to see those scholars complete their four years of study under our watch was nothing but... And to see those scholars complete their four years of study under our watch was nothing more than miraculous. I felt so proud. And then to see the types of services that were provided for them in lieu of a pandemic, Dr. Henderson, I would say that that service there and graduation was better than what we provided en masse without a pandemic. It was personable. It was professional. It was inclusive. And it was, it was, it went off without a hitch. But don't take my word for it. I'm sure as all my board members do from time to time, we get texts and we get emails and we get letters and things of that nature. I got a letter, doc. And it just, I mean, it made everything, I could run through a wall for this district after reading this letter. Because it truly shows why we do what we do and how people truly appreciate what we do. I want to thank board member Wagner, board member Kelly, and board member Patterson for standing up for those hours under that tent for two graduations on Saturday and that one graduation on Sunday. And we had a quorum, Sam, Amanda, Claudia, so I'm not excluding you guys, I understand you guys had scheduled things to do, but you were represented by us very well. We had a quorum, and it did my heart proud to see four of us standing up there in that weather on our weekend to make sure that our scholars knew that they were appreciated by this board. So thank you, board, everyone, even those that couldn't attend, we understand. Thank you that we were represented. May 28, 2021, Rodney Alexander, Board of Education Board President. He's got the address here to the district. Mr. Alexander, I have had the privilege and honor of attending seven graduations at Proviso East High School. Three children, one nephew, and as of May 23, 2021, three grandsons, different years. Each time was very heartfelt. On Sunday, May 23, my grandson, Christopher J. Jackson, graduated from Proviso East High School. Hearing how the graduation was going to take place started me to thinking that everything would begin and end so fast. We would not have time to get that special feeling. It was just the opposite. From the time we arrived, I was overwhelmed with the attention our two cars received. As we approached the area, individuals received us with their hands waving, smiling, directing, and congratulating us. Tears filled my eyes. We were instructed to put our radio on the proper channel so that we could hear the commencement. There was someone at different posts telling us which way to proceed. Not one time did we have to ask anything. We made it to the stage without incident. As we parked, once again, I was so grateful to see a well-prepared stage with faculty waiting to receive these young people was so touching to me. We were told how to exit and that backdrops were positioned where we could take pictures. Thank you, ma'am. Everything was so timely that we did not have to wait in long lines for picture-taking. I am sending this letter to say thank you to all who made our special day, so very special. In other words, neonis optimus, nothing but the best. Lives will forever remember this pandemic and what our scholars have had to overcome this year. What you have provided has no price to be attached to it. I went to several after-graduation events that I was invited to, and the looks on these families' faces and the congratulations, priceless. I would run through a wall twice, seven times a week, twice on Sunday for that and for this. It makes all the name-calling and lawsuits and everything worth it, doc, to know that forever in the students' lives of 2021 during this pandemic, we made a difference. We did it right. That's what we're here for, board. Thank you, guys, again for the opportunity to serve. I greatly appreciate it. I do not take it for granted. I do my best to represent this board in every aspect, nothing but the best, as you all do alongside with me. Thank you for everyone that made this summer and this last year bearable, for not just our scholars and their parents, but for your fellow employees and for this community. Nothing but the best, Dr. Henderson. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, let me say thank you to each of you for your vote of confidence, your support, the extension of my contract. I thank you. It has been tough. In fact, it has been hell. Mr. Wagner, you said it best. Trying to operate in a climate like this, which is toxic at best. And I'm a fighter. And I fight for children. Ladies and gentlemen, your vote this evening will not be in vain. We will produce. But let me be very clear. This is not a James Henderson thing. This must take place with administration, with support staff, and where the rubber really meets the road, in the classroom, with our teachers. Teachers, we are going to continue to do that which is in the best interest of children. No, we're not going to always agree. We will respectfully agree to disagree. But because I know you are professionals, you're going to do that which is right for all children. And I will be right there with you to ensure that it happens. Board? You all didn't agree, but as a board, you agreed. Ms. Grant, I appreciate your candor, your directness, our conversations. We agreed to disagree. And we still have healthy respect for each other and will continue to have that respect. We just agreed to disagree on that one. But we agree on almost everything else for the most part. Mr. Wagner?
I look forward to continuing our relationship and doing what we need to do for children.
Ms. Patterson? I thank you for your support. Ms. Kelly? God knows you all, she gives me a hard time every day. I mean, every day.
Every day?
Every day. And if we're not talking, she's texting me, telling me how to run this district. And I mean, you better do it with your hard-headed self. I'm going to tell all of you guys. But I really do appreciate your leadership, your guidance. Ms. Kelly? Mr. V? Thank you, my man. We're going to make it happen for all children. My guy, my brother. Mr. Alexander? I thank you for your leadership.
Thank you, darling.
Board of Education, I love you all. And we're going to continue to work in tandem to move this district forward. Ms. Medina? I'm waiting on you. Now we'll get started. Mr. Alexander, I have two students still here that we want to recognize.
Please do.
And so we want to bring them, come out of order, if you will.
Is your report ready? Actually, we're in order because of your report.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Well, thank you. Ms. McLendon? We're going to, is Ms. McLendon here?
I'm here.
We're going to step out of order from your presentation. Will you come on up and recognize our scholars, please?
Yep. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am Michelle McLendon with Gilbain Building Company. I will give our facilities master plan update, and then I'll get to the fun part of my presentation. We are actively working.
I would like to go straight to.
We'll go straight down to the five minutes. All right, here we go. All right, as I mentioned before, we are giving two internship opportunities to students in the Proviso Township High School District. We received over twenty applications and ten video introductions, and we are excited to extend offers to two students. First up, we have Dosei Rivera from Proviso Math and Science Academy. I'll let Dosei tell us a little about herself and why she wanted to do the internship.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Rivera. I'm a senior at Proviso Math and Science Academy. After hearing about this internship opportunity, I was immediately hyped by what this experience with Gilbain would bring. I look forward to growing professionally and personally with this team and see the ideas of our district and inspiration to better improve our schools. I'd like to thank my family for their support and Gilbain for this amazing opportunity. I am so excited to see how this opportunity will help me to grow and help me to better improve myself and my future goals and aspirations.
All right.
We'll have to pick up the next student, we'll go all together. The next student that will be doing an internship opportunity is Mark Robinson with Proviso High School. You want to tell us about why you wanted to apply for the internship experience and what you hoped to gain?
Hi, my name is Mark Robinson. The reason I applied for this internship was because I want to work in the architect field. I plan to go to North Carolina and A.C., A&amp;T. This, I really thank God for allowing me to get this, and I thank Gilbain for the opportunity as well, and my principal for pushing me to do this. This is just a thing for me where I feel that my life will go forward and move forward with everything I plan to do. And thank you.
Very good.
Mark will be doing his internship over at, you go to East, and so you're headed to Proviso West. And then Dosei will be doing hers over at Proviso East. So we are excited, and let me give them their official Gilbain safety vest, and then we'll take a couple of photos.
All right.
And then reportedly, does your hard hat and safety vest.
You have to wear those all the time. Without hard hats and safety vests.
They will definitely need safety boots and we probably will have the information they had for their first day.
But I need you to squeeze tight. Or somebody like behind them.
Can you see us back there?
Yep, and Mr. Wagner. Yes, please. Right there. Oh, not right there, not right there. Now, Mr. Wagner, there you go, and then Dr. Henderson, if you could squeeze in, that would be great. Almost did. I need you to squeeze up. Perfect.
Thank you so very much, Gilbain. Ms. McLendon?
Thank you.
All right, we will quickly get started with our presentations. Mr. Paul Starkey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. The next evening is a celebration. So our financial picture for the month of April, a few highlights on the treasury report. We have, I want to point out in the revenue section, the capital projects column, the FY 2021 adapted budget has a $4.5 million add to it. There's an offsetting $4.5 million in the budget on the expenditure side. That is the transfers that we rescinded this last month. So you will see that those did not actually happen. The number you're seeing there is just the budget. We're not amending the budget to change that because it was planned. So that's on the revenue side. On the payable side, we have, obviously, in the capital projects column, $21 million, almost $22 million worth of expenditures against the $52 million budget. Most of that will roll over. The $30 million will roll over plus some into the next budget. We have one more payment in debt service, and in May, things will look a bit more expended because we have five payrolls to people that they pick up on the last day before they leave for the summer. So we have an acceleration in May. Are there any questions on the treasury report? Terrific. Tonight, we also have an action item that is the purchase of our four buses. We've been leasing those for a number of years. We have, they are 2017 buses. They are low-use buses. We got a great parties from the current owner of the buses, and we are looking to now purchase them. So we feel like we've taken good care of our equipment, and we now have the opportunity to purchase them at a good price. No bid needed because it is a used equipment exception under school code. Are there any questions regarding the buses? That is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Starkey. Mr. Elsie Taylor?
Good evening, Board of Education.
Good evening.
Um, congratulations to everyone on their monumental, life-changing experiences. Mr. Gil, congratulations on retirement. It has been a pleasure working with you, uh, knowing you, and I'm sure we will see each other in the past. Uh, with that said, we have two presentations, one from Gilbane. We're going to let Gilbane go first today, and we're going to bring up Purpose of Will, Go of Sequence Work 2.2, and Science Labs for Proviso East High School.
Mr. Wood.
All right, good evening again.
Good evening.
Well, as I mentioned, we are working, um, at Proviso East Stadium right now, so this is going to be underground site utilities work that is in progress over at the stadium. As you know, stadium has been demolished, we are grading, um, we put in our, uh, floor protection plans, et cetera, over there. Again, more photos of Proviso East Stadium. Over at Proviso West, this is some of the work that's happening in the mechanical world. However, since school has ended, we have started all of the work and started doing work on the third floors, containment areas, et cetera, to start the mechanical installation throughout the third floor over at West. And same for East. Now that school is over, we started on Monday, uh, doing the work on the third floor corridors and some work throughout the remainder of the building as well in preparation for the mechanical upgrades at both East and West. Our update on the financials, uh, of Sequence 2.1 for the auto shop, we have used all of our allowances, and we have small balance remaining as we have dropped off the auto shop, and we are in the process of closing out the auto shop project, so thirty-five-hundred dollars left in allowances. Again, for Sequence 2.1, uh, nothing for, uh, for West, and we've used everything over at DMSA for the landscaping, so for Sequence 2.1, we are rounding that out. For Sequence, uh, 2.1, again, this is for our change order tracking. We have, uh, credits in the amount of fifty-nine thousand worth of credits for Proviso East, nothing over at West, and then thirty-five-hundred dollars in landscape and credits for Proviso Math and Science Academy. This is the first sequence of the work, again, which we have, uh, completed over at, uh, both schools. For Sequence 2.2, for the Proviso West upgrades, we just started that work. We started off with a two-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar allowances for the project. We've spent roughly eighty-seven-hundred in allowances, with well over two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand remaining allowances that we'll use throughout, throughout the summer as we do those mechanical upgrades at West. As far as, um, change orders, our potential change orders are about a hundred and nine-thousand dollars. This is work that we've already, uh, taken a look at and just estimated, and we update throughout the project. We talked about this, uh, in a couple of different meetings. 2.2 over at East, again, our tracking log, three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand allowances. We just got started over at the stadium, we used about seven-thousand in allowances, well over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand left in allowances for the stadium, which is taking place right now. As far as, uh, change orders, I'm sorry, rather, mechanical upgrades and the allowances, rather, for Proviso East, again, since that started with that work, five-hundred-and-twenty-thousand allowances, we've used just a little of it at this time, still well over four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars in allowances left over for work that we have to do over at Proviso East for the mechanical upgrades. As far as, uh, change order tracking for East and the stadium, um, we have a hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand in potential change orders for the stadium, but this is, uh, again, work that we have talked about previously over at the stadium, and two-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand for work over at Proviso East. Uh, this is the acceptance of change orders of work that we paid out during the bid for alternates, um, specifically the lighting in the auditorium, um, that was accepted, and so that is showing up in our change orders log now that we've accepted to be, to do that work and proceed with that work over at Proviso East. Uh, we had a bid package out on the street for the relocation of the furniture at East and West to put it back into the classrooms at the end of the summer. We did open that bid package on June third, sent over the, um, tally or the comparisons of the bid, and we will proceed accordingly if we need to, uh, present that for approval at a later time once we decide how we're going to move forward with getting all the furniture back into the classrooms at the end of the summer. And we've already talked about our internships, and that is my report for our construction project.
We have just one question. So, uh, recently in the market, uh, construction industry, actually, the materials have been rising anywhere from a hundred to two-hundred percent. What, what caution or what precautions are you guys taking to avoid a change order that, you know, half-a-million-dollar change order would now cost you a half, one and a half millions probably because of the materials?
So we are really leaning on our contracts that are already in place prior to some of the escalation that we are seeing in the market, um, when it comes to that. Yes, materials are nothing we could have ever predicted. I know that when we started the pandemic, a lot of the concern was what's going to happen with our market, what's going to happen with our supply chain, and we just didn't know when it was coming. We all thought that it was coming, the best of us, that it was coming in 2020. We're now seeing it in 2021. What's on our side is that we let all of our contracts early. So all of our contracts were signed and executed and released, uh, December, January, February, because we got out on the street early. Uh, at this time, we haven't received, um, any significant claims for material escalations or things like that. Uh, the ones that we have received, we've been able to negate them and, and effectively, um, or get rid of them because of our contracts, and we're able to enforce the fact that we signed agreements months ago, uh, and release those materials at this time. So, and that's worked in our favor, so we are very cognizant of the escalation. Uh, lead times are crazy, and we're doing our best to make sure that we don't have, uh, that effect in our project.
And you would let us know?
Most definitely.
Well, we don't want to know.
It, it's not the easiest thing to present something like that, however, it's what I do, so, uh, we understand that that's, you know, something that's, you know, that's out there, but we are actively monitoring it and, and really, um, hoping that because, again, we released everything months ago, that everyone did what they were contracted to do, ordered the materials, and now we just need for it to show up.
So my board members can understand, uh, about a year, maybe six months ago, two-by-four was maybe two dollars and ninety-five cents, it is now seven dollars and fifty cents, so.
Because of the pandemic.
I don't know why it is.
It, it's supply chain. So we say pandemic, but it's supply chain. In 2020, we didn't do a lot of projects, so our things were put on hold for residential construction, commercial construction, you know, residential, a lot of two-by fours and was anything like that. But now that everyone's out there pulling the trigger on their construction projects, and people are, you know, have losing the first train quite a bit, everyone is building, everyone is releasing projects to go, and so now we're seeing a little bit of a snag in the supply chain. Supply chain's late for all of that.
The government's flooding the, uh, districts with all this stimulus.
Yes, yes. So we are actively monitoring, and if things should change, I will provide that in financial report.
Great question. Thank you.
The Purpose of Will, you guys ready?
Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Take a look.
Okay, uh, good evening, panelists.
Good evening.
To be able to see a, the image up on the board here, uh, to be on a, 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 a free agenda for a, a, a design process here, and, uh, we're talking about scheduling, uh, permitting the East Athletic Equipment, East Stadium scoreboard, uh, and then update on our Sequence 3 project. Uh, so an update on our project schedule, uh, the Sequence 3 project is continuing on through the design phase here. We, uh, had, uh, fold a little bit of our designs into the summer break. We were hoping to have a, a, a refreeze from our design side, and we felt we had a full understanding where we sit financially for that after summer break, but we're continuing on through the design, uh, for the, the sci- the science lab at East as well as the, uh, capillary work, uh, at East and West, and, uh, some of the additional other work, blood control, uh, and, uh, other elements here in the summer break as well. Uh, and then we intend to, to pull that back in earnest after the, uh, majority of the work is completed in the summer, and we understand where we sit financially for that, and have a bidding at the end of the year here, um, has been reviewed by Gilbane. An update on permitting, I'll let Jessica give us an update here.
Thanks, Mike. Um, okay, since, uh, we, uh, last gave you our last update a month ago, we received the final NWRD approval for the East work, and also just this afternoon, we received the final approval for the West, uh, Sequence 2.2 work. So as of this point in time, uh, we have now received all of the permits and approvals necessary for the summer construction work. Any questions on permits? All right, thank you.
So, uh, we'll probably be holding up on any further discussions on permitting until the end of the project, uh, when we look at, uh, our final quote-out permitting, uh, at this time, since all that I've heard is there. So move on to the East track and field equipment. I'll let Carl take this item.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so during, uh, shop drawing review of some, uh, equipment for the East Athletic, uh, there were some, uh, coach-requested, uh, athletic, uh, equipment revisions, uh, and this is based on the, uh, uh, kind of a differentiation from the initial direction given to, uh, the design team to design to IHSA or NFHS, uh, standards, or typical, you know, high school events and standards. Uh, these upgrades that I'm going to briefly discuss here would allow, uh, Proviso East to host, uh, NCAA or US, uh, track and field, uh, events. So I'll just run through a couple of items here. Um, we've received some, uh, uh, pricing information from Gilbane, uh, just in the recent days here, and we're still waiting for a couple of additional, uh, pricing items, uh, to kind of fully, uh, flush out the impacts of this. So I'll just run through these items. Um, the first request was for a long jump pit forming system. This is essentially a specific, uh, type of system that allows the sand in a long jump pit to more easily circulate and, and keep the sand contained. Uh, it's something that's, uh, commonly seen when a long jump pit is surrounded by, um, by athletic track material, uh, whether it be exterior or, uh, uh, very commonly, uh, in indoor situations. Um, because of the site geometry, uh, and the limitations, uh, on where we could locate the long jump pit, this would require a custom pit forming system. Uh, so the cost impact to this item, uh, is, was estimated by Gilbane to be about seventy-six-thousand dollars. Um, so where this differentiates from the current design as bid, um, it's a more typical, uh, concrete curb system, um, that would enclose the pit, um, and the pit is surrounded by grass. So again, this would be, uh, an upgrade, uh, to that, uh, long jump pit. The schedule impact for this area would be only to the long jump, uh, area only, it would not, uh, at this point, uh, have any secondary, uh, schedule impacts. Uh, we are currently in discussions with the ROE just to ensure that they can, uh, grant occupancy or at least partial occupancy for the remainder of the facility, even if the long jump pit, uh, trails, uh, trails a little bit. Uh, similarly, the coaches requested that the, uh, discus, uh, throwing ring and cage be upgraded to, uh, accommodate both hammer and discus. Um, this had a cost impact of about forty-seven-thousand dollars. Uh, hammer is not current, is not an IHSA or NFHS, uh, uh, event, um, and the existing concrete, or the, uh, proposed concrete pad needs to be modified to a combined hammer-discus pad or a double separate hammer-discus pad. Um, similarly, to the long jump pit forming system, uh, we don't anticipate too much schedule impact, um, and whatever impact there would be would, uh, likely be, uh, limited to just the hammer and discus cage. Uh, the third item requested was just an alternate jump board, not going to really cover this because there's minimal to no cost impact and no schedule impact here. The fourth item was for, uh, specific water jump pit hurdles. Uh, the cost impact on this, uh, would vary. Um, the bidding contractor, uh, for the athletic equipment provided a fifteen-thousand-dollar voluntary alternate for portable steeplechase hurdles. Um, the ones requested by the coaches would be more a, uh, permanent but still removable sleeve system with a pin that would hold these steeplechase hurdles in place, um, so it would likely run northward of, uh, fifteen-thousand dollars, although we are still waiting for a final pricing on that. Um, similarly, uh, to hammer, steeplechase is not an IHSA, NFHS event, however, the track that is currently, uh, incorporated into the base scope can accommodate steeplechase, uh, should it become, uh, an event in the future. Uh, the last item, uh, is a removable track curb, uh, and this is essentially a metal curb that, uh, surrounds the inside lane of a track. Uh, its main purpose is to stop, uh, the users of the inside track from encroaching and gaining an advantage. This is something that's seen, uh, at the college, uh, at the collegiate level and for USA track and field events. Uh, it is not required for IHSA and NFHS events. Um, you do typically see this, uh, at the state, uh, track meet where state records are set, um, and that's usually held at Eastern, or has always been held at Eastern Illinois University, which because it is an NCAA facility, uh, is requal- you know, is required to have the, uh, the inside track curb. However, we did have discussions with, uh, the IHSA, and they said that if the state meet were moved to a different facility that did not have the track curb, uh, that, you know, they would still allow, uh, state records to be set at that facility. So this is not an item that they said they would expect, uh, a high school facility to have. However, um, this is something that could be added at a later date as track curb systems are custom-fitted to the track geometry, um, so the district does not necessarily need to make a decision on this, uh, this particular item at this point if they would like to, uh, defer it to a later date. So that, those, uh, that summarizes the five items that the, uh, uh, coaches requested at Proviso East. Uh, if there are any questions on these items, I'd be happy to, uh, take them.
Do we have a total cost?
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Is it, is it, I'm sorry, is that, is the cost impact the seventy-six-thousand, forty-seven-thousand? And I see water jump pit hurdles and track curb, yes, yes, but no numbers?
Right, I'm still waiting, uh, we are still waiting on pricing from, uh, Gilbane on those two items.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, we don't have specific, uh, costs on that. For the long jump pit forming system and the hammer-discus cage, those are, uh, tied directly to proposals, uh, that have been provided by the, uh, by, by the contractor providing the athletic equipment.
Great, okay, thank you.
I have a question here.
How do you?
Related to the changes, does Proviso, did, does Proviso West have a professional opinion or recommendation related to the acceptance of each upgrade?
I, I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Related to the changes, does Proviso West have a professional opinion and, and professional opinion or recommendations related to the acceptance of each item? Is there a professional opinion in reference to this? Because this, you're saying the coach is asking for this.
What you're saying though, that it's what is the reasoning behind these requests?
Pretty much. That's what I'm saying without saying, using the.
And how necessary are they? Do we really need them?
So these requests, um, would allow Proviso East to host, uh, collegiate and USA track and field events. Um, they are not required for IHSA and NFHS, uh, NFHS standard events, um, you know, for, uh, you know, you could host up to sectionals, uh, with the facility as currently designed. So, um, I, I believe the coaches have expressed a desire to host, um, summer, uh, summer programs, uh, and summer events that would require, uh, NCAA and USATF, uh, uh, level facilities, but, um, for, for typical high school, uh, track and field athletics, these items would not be required.
Has anyone sat down with the superintendent to go over this, uh, so that it can be analyzed as to what we really need and what we don't need? Uh, and, and like, and again, the cost, the total cost.
Hey, Carl, I'll, I'll jump in on that. Yeah, so I.
Yeah, so I've had two or three discussions related to this track equipment with Dr. Henderson. We wanted to bring it to the board and then Dr. Henderson will be our coach on how to proceed after the meeting.
I think we need some totals.
Well, not only totals, we need to, is it even necessary? It looks like you're planning Proviso East Track and Field for some type of collegiate or outside of our students. I mean, I'm in front of more people than you.
It's for students, yeah.
Yeah, they're planning this to do something other than Proviso East.
And then how many other meets do we have here outside of?
Let me, let us do our due diligence and we'll bring it back to you.
Yeah, I think there should be a kind of a plan to grow the track and field team. Not just, you know, a plan to within the next few years. So we get this, you know, work hard to grow our teams and grow our, you know, our track and field or whatever, whatever. To be able to obtain these things. Because I know in the past, they used to travel out in the summer to, you know, camps that had these. But it wasn't that many students. So there should be a plan incorporated into not only requesting these items, but a plan to grow in the track and field, you know, across country, obviously.
Sure. Next, I'm going to go to the state scoreboard and I'll let Carl go through this item as well.
Okay, so this one has a couple of different moving parts here. So please, if I, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me here. During bidding, the scoreboard manufacturer offered a voluntary alternate for a higher resolution scoreboard. So, you know, there's no cost to the district for a higher resolution scoreboard. However, there were some secondary costs as the higher resolution scoreboard does require more power to, for it to function. And so there were some electrical upgrades needed as a result of that. Additionally, the district requested a lighted top truss element and an additional scoreboard element below. And we'll show you on the next slide here, there, thanks, Mike. So on the left here, we have the design that, as was bid, the original design, which was a higher resolution screen. And then on the right was, would be the proposed provision. That would have an additional scoreboard element on the bottom and then the lighted truss at the top. And we are currently working, if the district would like to proceed with this alternate scoreboard design, we would work with the school brand standards to ensure that the font and the pyrotech and the colors all match the school brand standards. So these two items here, and I guess Mike, if you want to go back to the previous slide. So those two additional items total approximately $31,459. And then the electrical upgrades to accommodate those items, each of those items has additional power needs, would be about an additional $8,800 for a subtotal of about $40,245. At the same time during this review, it was noted that there was duplication in the bidder's scope for some of the low voltage work. And so as a result, the district, to help offset some of this additional scoreboard expense, will be receiving a credit of $12,800. So the bottom of the line add for the additional scoreboard elements and electrical upgrades would be $27,445. Any questions? Oh, sorry, any questions on this particular item?
Hey Carl, if you could please, on this slide here, if you could just go with the dimensions of the scoreboard on the left side there.
Sure, yeah, the, so the video element for both scoreboards would be identical. And that would be about 16 and a half feet in height and 28 and a half feet in width.
But LT, the pirate head would be the pirate.
He would be the trademark pirate, yeah, we had that conversation.
Wait, the pirate or Teresa Kelly with the pirate hat?
Oh my God, yes.
I don't know.
I vote for Teresa Kelly.
Can I get emotions for that?
Well, go ahead and get revised.
We just wanted to point out the size of the scoreboard to make sure that we're transparent on what we're getting. There's been similar discussions about our key signs. And I just wanted to make sure we hammer this one home. We learned our lesson on the first run. We want to make sure that we point out how big this sign is, 28 by 16. It's a pretty big sign. Also, the winning contractor through Gilbain actually upgraded us from 16 millimeter to a 10 millimeter, which is almost like watching a flat screen in your home. It's, it's going to be pretty crystal clear. And that upgrade is about $50,000 or $60,000 upgrade and was given to Proviso for free. So great work, Michelle.
Yeah, great, thank you, thank you.
Okay, there are no more questions on this item. We'll go on to some of the Sequence 3 projects. I'll just stay with Carl here on the, for a model perfection.
Yeah, so this is the culmination of a memo that was provided.
Excuse me, hold on, Carl. Quick question, how, how much time, so the, going back to the last slide on the billboard or the display, the Proviso East and the pirate. When we order that, or how much room do, or how much time do we have before that has to be? Or has that already been put out to bid? Is that the way it's going to look? Is this the final draft or?
It's not going to look identical. The pirate is going to be the trademark pirate and the font is going to be different as well.
How different?
The trademark font from Proviso. What is the proper name of the line?
Big noodle title.
So that font is trademarked and we really should follow our trademarks because it's the staple font for the school. So that's why we want to make sure we follow it.
When will that, when will that, when will those changes be put in to be actually?
Our rendering? We can do that agreement to the next FMP meeting. We actually talked about that and that work has already started, but we didn't finalize it as of yet.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so this slide here is just a culmination in the memo that had been provided a couple of months back to the district regarding the reports provided by the district's insurance collaborative or flood insurance. And one of the recommendations based on the review from Perks of Well and Alara Engineering and Plumbing Engineers was to provide some temporary flood protection in an attempt to minimize any potential impacts for flooding until more permanent site sewer infrastructure upgrades could be completed. So through discussions with the district maintenance staff who have a great deal of knowledge of the history of the flooding issue at Proviso East as well as numerous sidewalks and research and other exploratory efforts, a recommendation for 10 backup pumps to be placed throughout the existing tunnels of Proviso East was formulated. To get competitive numbers, Perks of Well, along with assistance from the district staff and Gilbain, solicited three proposals for this work that you see here. There are two components, there's a plumbing component and electrical component. The pumps will be connected to the emergency power circuit. And the lowest responsive proposal was from C.R. Leonard for plumbing and McWilliams for electrical at $48,198. There was a lower proposal initially submitted by Metropolitan. Metropolitan Plumbing, I believe is their official name, for plumbing and electrical work at $41,700. However, during scope review to ensure that all contractors were bidding the same scope of work, Metropolitan decided to withdraw their proposal, leaving again the combination of C.R. Leonard and McWilliams Electrical as the lowest responsive bidder. So are there any questions on this item here? So one last point to mention here is that once these pumps are put in place, they'll remain there until the permanent infrastructure upgrades are completed. At that point, these pumps can, you know, either remain in place for additional protection or the district can repurpose them as they would like.
And after that, six to seven years ago, we had KJWW do a report, a flood report, interior and exterior. And this was part of our agreement with CLIC to ensure that we get this work done. So this is pretty much mandatory, not something we've been outdone of.
As things go, of course, we're having a record drop when we put in the flood back in the items here. But I think it's still a good felt, a consistent system either way. The academic wing sunshade over by the west. Carl, do you want me to take that or do you want to take that?
I guess I'm on a roll here, might as well keep going. So one of the HLS items on the report, or that was, you know, kind of still remaining on the report, is for the repair of some damaged concrete sunshades that exists on the academic wing buildings B, C, and D out of Proviso West. There's quite a variety in the conditions to these sunshades. Some portions, based on their exposure to the north or to precipitation, are deteriorated a little bit more significantly. You can see some of the worst conditions here. And so the HLS item was to, you know, repair and stabilize these items and protect them going forward for the future. And so Perks of Well, along with our structural engineers, C. Anderson, reviewed a number of different options for the resolution of this, these items. You can kind of see these five items here, I won't go through them in too much detail. But what our recommendation is, since this is a fairly significant element that affects the visuals, the aesthetics of the academic wing, that, you know, the district should engage Gilbain to mock up two to three options for possible solutions for a couple of reasons. First, it'll give everyone an opportunity to review the impact to the building's aesthetics. Again, like I said, this will make a noticeable impact to the look of the academic wing. And we want to make sure that, you know, that the district is given maximum flexibility to choose the one that they think works best from that standpoint. Additionally, you know, there are long-term serviceability needs that we want to make sure it's easy to maintain, that this is not something that the district, you know, will need to continuously, you know, address and repair. And so like I said, we've prepared about five different options. There are two to three that would probably require a mockup. And, you know, at this point, based on feedback we've gotten from the FMP as well as the facilities committee, we'll be preparing a proposal request to Gilbain to prepare these mockups to install hopefully sometime this fall. So that way, these mockups can go through a winter season and everyone can have an opportunity to take a look and, you know, to give us, give the design team some feedback on which is ultimately the desired route to go. So any questions on that?
Are those mostly, are those mostly just shades or can they be removed? Removing those, I don't, would that cost a structural?
So these are integrated into some structural elements, however, they can be removed. There are some energy and kind of passive solar design benefits to these sunshades. You know, they do provide shade to the lower stories, especially during the summer months when the sun is higher in the sky. You know, they do provide energy savings to the district. However, we wanted to make sure all options were considered. So I believe, yeah, option number four there, you know, remove sunshades entirely, you know, is an option, you know, being considered. And Gilbain can help provide process and some of that. So that way the district can consider all aspects to that particular approach.
Yeah, you remove them, but then you need the shades inside for the, for black the sun.
Right, yeah, there's definitely an impact on how light would enter the space and the amount of solar heat gain that would be received during the summer months.
Which was the most cost effective?
Well, I mean, you know, there's short-term costs and there's long-term costs. You know, the short-term most cost effective would be to simply repair the concrete and essentially restore it to a like original condition where it's just, you know, exposed horizontal concrete. And potentially in the future, this condition could re-arise. There are, you know, other cost options, for example, encapsulating it with some sort of high-performance coating that can provide some additional protection and, you know, perhaps increase longevity, all the way down to, you know, probably the more intensive one, which would be to install, install some aluminum planting or aluminum composite material enclosing the concrete. That one will provide the, you know, longest term durability of the sunshade, but also would have the highest initial cost. So, you know, there's, there's short-term and long-term costs to be weighed. And once, once the mockups are in place and Gilbain is at an opportunity to prepare a detailed estimate, I think those discussions will definitely take place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Mike, I think it's.
Yeah, the last item here is the science labs at East. We had two good sessions with the biology staff over at East. The building has selected two biology lab for potential renovation as part of SEVEN's 3. We had a good opportunity to tour those labs and have some good discussions with the staff about what they see as the current functioning state and what could happen in the future to these spaces. So we used a series of questions here really to frame our conversations with them and go, went through a lot of information with them. So we're currently working on designing some initial concepts for those labs, which will be presented within the next week here to the, to the building and to the new principal as well as the new, the new district wide science chair, who also sat in on the meetings with the biology staff. So that's moving forward as it is right now. And that really concludes our update for this month. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Dr. Howard, Dr. Williams?
Good evening, boys.
Good evening, good evening, Dr. Howard.
Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity. I'm very honored to be able to bring to you two updates on two major summer programs that have gotten increasingly better this summer. And this summer is no exception, thanks to the vision of Superintendent Henderson for allowing us the flexibility to innovate and providing the resources we need to support this work. So I want to thank you for that. And that's going to be followed by an action item for the adoption of our Black History curriculum and resources. So I'm going to go ahead and get started with our summer flight program, formerly known as summer school. We are offering four different categories of programs this summer. Our recovery courses, which we offer every summer, and it's actually been expanded to include some CTE and other elective offerings that we have not included in the past. We have our original credits. Our enrichment courses, which include a STEM camp and a freshman transition camp and for the first time, advanced placement preparation workshops. And then we have Pirate Q5, which is a continuation of the learning for our students at Proviso East who are in the CBE program. And we have onsite and virtual options, you know, sort of helping these students. So enrollment, we have far more students enrolled than we have in the past. As you can see here, we have close to 1,400 students currently enrolled. The majority of those are in recovery in Pirate Q5. The majority of those are in recovery in Pirate Q5, but we do have robust, a robust number of students in our original credit as well, 280, and then 102 in our enrichment program. We have about 326 students who are attending onsite. So we're pretty much at capacity for what Proviso Math and Science Academy can hold with the social distancing in place. So we're proud that we have so many students who are willing and desirous of coming onsite to sort of really kick off this summer program. It was just great to see all the students in the building. We started on Monday, it was yesterday, it was like a lot longer than that. And our original credit courses will begin next week, and that'll be followed by our enrichment courses, which begin on the 28th. So when all is said and done, we're going to have close to probably 14, 15, 1500 students involved in one form or fashion in some of these programs.
That's very nice.
Oh, and our summer graduation, please say the date, is going to be held on July the 20th, that's on Tuesday. Now, we also have professional learning happening for our faculty and staff, all the adults in the town, in our buildings. So we have extensive development happening for our teachers in the summer flight program because we have so many programs. We have dedicated professional development for them, and most of that happened last week, and we have a few more sessions that are coming up, that are coming weeks, because teachers have to do things differently. We wanted to make sure they have the tools and the training to make that happen. We're also having several workshops on the teaching of Black Studies. So that's going to be a couple of the Black History courses that we're offering. We already have several teachers signed up for that, and we even have teachers, believe you, Mr. Vadi Abzen, you'll appreciate this, who aren't even district teachers, but they want to learn. They want to be involved in professional development, and of course, we're going to forfeit that opportunity. So that's amazing.
Thank you.
Post-pandemic teaching practices, we learned a lot, there's a lot of best practices coming out of the field, so that's a big offering this summer, as, as well as some of our traditional offers, special education, emergent life angels. And we're also doing something with youth mental health. We want to make sure our teachers are equipped to sort of recognize the signs of stress, issues that students might be having when they come back into our classrooms in the fall, and that they're equipped to provide them with the resources and alert the right people. And also to recognize some of those signs and symptoms themselves. I should go back really quick. Do we have any questions on those two programs before I move into some of our action items?
I, I would, I would just like to say for the record, if this is a sign of things to come, I could start crying again. This is incredible. This addresses all of the pertinent, timely issues that we've been talking about up here as a board. Meaningful programs geared towards the population here at Proviso. Meaningful training for our teachers. I wish Ms. Medina was here to see, maybe she's watching through Zoom, the attention to detail we're giving to our, our providers, our first-line teachers, to address stuff like post-pandemic teaching. Is that relevant above any and everything? Is that going to be the most important thing coming back to the classroom? Yes. Thank you. This is, this is, this is incredible. 1,500 students we will have off the streets this summer, gainfully and actively involved in getting an education. We've opened the doors for our youth in the district to provide them summer education opportunities. We're doing our job as a community to provide safe spaces and learning spaces for our, for our youth, for a change. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Youth mental health. Goodness gracious, man, it's just, it's just a laugh. Go ahead, Harry. Man, beautiful, beautiful.
I want to spend some time and talk about our Barber and Cosmetology Program renewal. As you know, we have partnered with them since 2014. Students attend in their juniors and senior years. They come to us for half the day, and then they spend the remaining part of the day at one of the academies for industry practice and instruction. And what we have noticed is that over time, the completion rates and our licensing rates have improved. So you see a little chart here that shows you the difference between, sort of, the 2017 and the 2019 cohort, and that's just because we've had the pandemic the last couple of years, and we don't have solid data yet for our 2020, 2021 cohorts. But as you can see, like, the percent of students who are completing the program, that means obtaining all their hours, has dramatically increased. And the percent of students who obtained the licenses for the Barber program tripled, and it doubled for our Cosmo program, so they're both over 15% at this point. Some of that is due to, you know, better accountability on the district side, but also the state has allowed our students to sit for their license before they graduate, so before they complete all their hours. And that's also helped because they can have some of the adults around them to make sure they're happy with it.
Great, great, great.
Here we have a couple of testimonials, a really one, sort of a snippet that was taken from a student Chanel, who was just thanking Miss Robbins' Beauty Academy for all of the things that have happened in her life since attending the academy. She talks about here, as you can see, the opportunity to kind of start her career at 16 and make a little money outside while she was obtaining the license. It kind of shaped her future. She's working professionally in that industry right now. And I wanted to call your attention too, to three students who went on to obtain licenses in both of the programs, right? So these three students here from Proviso West, class of 2016, and two from the class of 2019, why are they on the same side? They're all successfully working in the industry right now. And then, of course, we talked about the other students who have all obtained their license. So we have several students who are working in the industry, and some are full-time and some are working part-time as they pursue an interest. Our interest in the program is organized, but we do have carefully selected students who are the students who are going to be able to finish and be successful. So we'll have a minimum of 20 students enrolled in each program. The tuition is $5,000 per student per year, and we're going to have stronger accountability measures in place to make sure that our students are completing and they're being successful. So we want to see those rates go up, for the license show up to over 7%.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're going to move into our Black History textbook adoption. We convened an advisory council on Black History, the council that was required by the resolution on Black Lives Matter that Ford reported not that long ago. And so that council spent like the first two years talking about the Black History course, and sort of what we desire is for the outcomes, characteristics, you know, things that would happen as a result of students taking that course. We also consulted with some experts in the field to understand best practices. We wanted to make sure we were giving them the best card we possibly could. And this comes from the advisory council. And this is just a few of the bullet points. If you want the complete pieces, actually, in the item that you have in front of you. So the few things that sort of stood out is that this advisory council really wanted to make sure that this course included the humanity of all people. You know, structural impacts of bias and discrimination. They wanted our students to understand that there's a huge impact for the Black people, civilization, and culture over time, right? It's not just about slavery. We want to reframe that discourse, and we want to make sure that they understand that Black History did not start here in America. And there's more. These are just some of the things that kind of stood out, people talking about a lot. When we were looking at textbook or resources for the course, we wanted to make sure it included a variety of thought and perspective, that it had updated information, sort of modern photographs that was sensitive and thoughtful, things that encouraged meaningful social action, that it had ample resources for our teachers, because for many of them, they're teaching us for the first time, so they need lots of support, and that it was inclusive of the voices of African-Americans. Now, this is the top word, right? Our team went to work and we started scouring and looking at a lot of resources. I have an office full of them right now that we're kind of combing through. And then, when we talked to some of the experts, right, they also talked about the importance of starting with a high-quality curriculum. Here, I listed sort of the four main experts that we talked to. Dr. Incuzi Nam is from Dominican University. He's the director of their Black Girl Studies program, and his expertise is in critical race theory and multicultural education. He spent a lot of time working with us and talking with us about how we need to sort of build, start thinking about developing our faculty for this course. And also that came out of this conversation was the opportunity for us to offer a dual-credit Black History course called African and African-American Thought through Dominican University.
Oh, that's great.
So in a couple of weeks... In a few weeks, we have six teachers who are going to be going to Dominican to be trained personally by Dr. Incuzi. We're excited about that. It's going to be a week-long training, and this is unprecedented, right? You don't often get the director of a program willing to train high school teachers. And so we've got students slated who are going to take the dual-credit course in the fall and in the spring. Okay, Mr. Alexander? Keep going, keep going, all right? Let me speed up, let me speed up here. So we're grateful for the opportunity, and our partners, Dominican has always been a great partner to Proviso, so we're excited about that. Ismaila Viviniz is actually, he's a curriculum director out of Philadelphia, you know, one of the first districts in the country to make Black History requirement. He spent some time with us, and he kind of talked about their lessons learned. He taught the course personally for 12 years, so we got a lot of valuable information from him. Dr. David Stolbal out of UIC gave us a lot of information on what we can expect and how we can really think about incorporating our Latinx community into the Black History piece so they don't feel that doubt, so thank you. And then Dr. LeGarrette King out of the University of Missouri, he's also spent time with us and has agreed to be a resident...
Missouri State.
It's actually the University of Missouri. Missouri State is the title.
Okay, because they, they kind of, the states and the universities get really, you know...
That's supposed to be University of, he's from Mizzou.
Oh, sorry.
So that should be that. And he's going to work with us and offer professional development for all of our faculty and kind of, he's sort of our resident consultant, because he's done this work in other districts, so we're happy to have him on board as well.
How often are we expecting him to, like, be here or provide that consultation?
We're looking at monthly.
Okay.
He's going to come in sort of once a month, he'll be able to coach our teachers and give them some sort of in-time feedback on how everything's going.
Okay.
And take a look at our curriculum and things like that. And so that sort of led us to some of their commonalities up here. These are just some of the commonalities that came from all of those experts about being inclusive and thinking in things, not timelines, and I'm going to go through all of it, have a high-quality curriculum, make sure that we have training, 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 ongoing feedback and dialogue about how this course is going, and keep that pressure on. Don't do it for a week and then forget about it. Like, keep it going year-round regularly so that it becomes sort of a way of life for us. And so after scouring through all of that and looking at what we have learned, it led us to sort of Black History 365, and thanks to Angela Rayburn, because one of her experts actually turned us on to this curriculum. And as we started looking at investigating it, started checking those boxes, like, yes, it has this, yes, it has this, yes, it has this, yes, it has this. It's got 3,000 original artifacts that are included in it that we can't see in any of the typical textbooks that we have. It's a very inclusive account of African-American history and Black history in this country and across the world. It starts in ancient Africa, comes all the way up to modern times, and they include an advisory board of prominent African-Americans who contribute to sort of the content of the courses, and they have a student advisory board, and they contribute to the ongoing sort of updates to it. And they said that we can have a couple of spots for our Proviso students on their board as well, you know, once we start implementing this, so this is... They have a comprehensive professional development specific for this course that they'll be offering to our teachers, and that also is ongoing throughout the year. And that's inclusion at the bundling price that we're going to talk about. So it's very distinctive, there are big distinctive that make this very different from a typical curriculum you would get from our big publishers, Michael Pearson and those other guys. Am I going to go through all of them? But I am going to highlight number two, which is the elephant experience, because this is what, as an educator, really excites me, because with the elephant experience, the students have these sort of places in the curriculum where they stop and engage, really think about what they just learned, and how they can apply that sort of to their lives, right? And it sets up the engagement process for them. It's almost like project-based, but it's very action-oriented, and that's what's really going to get all of our students, whether they're Black or Brown or White, really involved in the conversation. And it also has, moving on, these integrated technologies. So in the book, and this is an ebook as well, you can click on the QR code, and it takes you to either that place they just described on a virtual tour. So these students will see places they could not visit on their own right now, or it'll take them to a video where they can see someone describing in more detail. So it allows students to really interact with the material. This is not a static textbook, this is not your typical piece, and it has an album of original music that accompanies and supplements this work that the students will also have as, you know, being a hope in the course and that new textbook.
Wow, I want to take the dollar.
Will they just both nestboard, where you guys can download your consideration?
They have to register.
I'm going to stop there if you don't have any questions for me about the curriculum, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Richard Williams to talk about the other items.
Thank you so much.
That's amazing.
That is amazing. Thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
See you, Doc.
Good evening, everyone. The only thing that I will add to what Dr. Howard said, and you should listen to the soundtrack.
All right.
You totally should listen to the soundtrack. I'm coming to describe an action item for an assessment platform to replace the one we currently use. We need an assessment platform, and currently have one for district-level assessments, for course-common assessments, and for individual classroom assessments, individual teachers giving their own assessments to their students. The difference with this one is Power School Performance Matters integrates with Power School, it's a Power School product, that is our student information system, and as integrates with Schoology as well. That is the learning management system that we began using this past year. Having the opportunity to integrate assessments with the instruction, with storage of our student data is very powerful. One thing that this allows us to do is to be able to really get at the associated data from assessments, monitor student progress, to look for opportunities to support construction for students who are being very successful, look for opportunities for enhancement, as well as to support students who may be, may not be doing as well. For this year, because it would be an implementation year, the fee is a little bit more than what will be in subsequent years. They set up an implementation, there's a one-time fee of $15,000, training that they will provide, that is something that we can renew, but we certainly need it for a first year for $4,500, and then the ongoing fee would be licensing and subscription for availability for all of our students at $3,656,250. So the total for this year will be $57,687,50. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
How effective is this? Because for a long while at Proviso East, I'm going to speak specifically of Power School, there were some issues with the data, there were some issues with getting someone in to take care of the matter. So I, that's a concern that I have, it's not, and then we have the, we have asked to add an additional fee to this whole setup implementation. My question is, will it work?
So the addition of any software package is always going to come with some setup and implementation. For example, we have been using for the last several years a similar platform called Mastery Connect. The cost for Mastery Connect is similar to the licensing and subscription that we are bringing for, for Power School Performance Matters. Mastery Connect is not a perfect integration, is not an automatic integration with Power School, there are manual ways to transfer the assessment data from Mastery Connect into Power School. With a Power School product, the opportunities for integration are supported by Power School. So even our, our implementation with Schoology, one of the challenges has to do with the ways that we have been using Power School in the past, that caused some challenges with the integration, but I am confident that our new Director of Integrated Technology, as well as our new Power School Administrator that will be coming on board, will be very instrumental in making this process more seamless.
There's a difference, East doesn't use Power School, do they?
Everyone in the district uses Power School.
What's the difference in what East does because of competency base? There's a difference.
So the learning management system that has been used at East to support the competency-based education is, and I'm drawing the blank right this minute.
Empower.
That's the first thing that came to mind, I'm thinking of something else. They've been using Empower. And the challenge has been that Empower is not a product that was set up in to integrate.
Right.
So you can force these platforms to talk to each other. But in this case, honestly, again, this is not my area of expertise. This is based on the things that I have learned over these last three years in this role. Is that the, what I described as having the person with the time and the capacity on the same day to make that happen hasn't been available. So everybody in the district uses Power School because Power School is where we store all of our student data. That is our student information system. The extent to which it was used for proviso ease was to enter final grade for student course work.
So the question then is, will this work with Empower?
I cannot speak.
We will not be using Empower next year.
Okay. That's good.
So yes, it will work.
Okay, great.
So, Dr. Henderson, I'm going to ask that Power School is looked into throughout the district. I'm not telling you something, I think I know that it has for some time, probably before some of the people that are employed here now, and it has continued. It has to be fixed. You know, I mean, we really, we have to pay more money and it's not even servicing.
We can co-sign with you, Ms. Patterson. And we have the right gentleman on the job to get it done. Mr. Pritchett, thank you.
So this is a part of the technology?
Any further questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Doctor. Yes, okay.
Do you guys remember that this was online adoptive? So we have a new health textbook that we are presenting. We had an advisory committee that was, adoption committee that was developed to look at the adopting the new health textbook. Thank you, Ms. O'Shea.
Thank you.
The health textbook and associated workbook is coming down the line. This is a Goodheart Welltops textbook. We use a number of their products for a number of our CTE questions as well. This does meet the Illinois requirements for health and sexual education. There's functional health information that's shared, shaping personal values and beliefs, group norms, really about healthy lifestyles for our students. This is a textbook that the committee determined, after reviewing several different textbooks, decided that this is the best one for our students. It supports the needs of our students, the approach to health education in the state of Illinois. And it's really about students being able to develop healthy lifestyles, healthy practices. We do like to make sure that, especially in these pandemic times, that the textbooks that we purchase also have a story that's available. How we learn quickly, how necessary that is. Questions about health textbook? All right, thank you very much.
Glad to see new textbooks continuing.
You know what? I have to say it every time.
I was about to, I was about to say something to you and Ms. Kelly.
Cause you like to talk about four years ago? Six years ago, we, we started buying textbooks and having a renewal process. And every time we renew a textbook, it gives me chills.
So having been a teacher in this district, I must speak to the joy that it brings me to crack open a new textbook.
You know? And, and one of the digital licenses, they're not used textbooks.
Yeah, thank you so much, really, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
That concludes our presentation, sir.
Thank you. Wow. Just been trying to bask in that president's report for a minute. I, I was, I have selfish reasons that, you know, my, my son will be a freshman at proviso west, so we're getting the registration stuff at home now. Me and the wife are sitting there going through the stuff and talking to him about, you know, summer flights and June 28th and the transition possibilities and things that are being offered. So I'm just glad that shortly after his freshman year begins, I won't be board president anymore. Cause then I'll be up here, I'll be able to fight and, and, cause I'm gonna be biased. I don't even know how you did it, Ned. I didn't just say I'm, Claudia, I don't even, man, I'm trying to just get out the way before, cause my boy is coming up here, that's my only son. And I'm just so proud of the work that this board has done to be able to prepare and just really improve this district in six short years. To where we are on the cusp of offering, I, I doubt that anyone in our district or our conference is offering the African-American courses we're offering. Is doing the type of renovations and, and, and infrastructure and attention-to-detail work that we're doing in this district. It is really exciting, incredible work. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. At this point in time, we have come to the consent agenda. Any items to be pulled from the consent agenda?
Yeah, two.
Two items.
I'd like to pull F and G.
F and G?
F and G, that is the implementation consultant, and G is the minutes.
Okay, great, F and G. Any others?
Well, we already approved I, so.
Right. I believe it. Any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items F and G?
Some.
Second, Ms. Grant, please call the roll. I'm sorry, discussion? Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Patterson? Ms. Grant, aye, Mr. Belcheres absent, Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Medina absent, Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to approve item 14F?
Some.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, just really briefly, I was hoping, just for the sake of, I think, the public at home, if someone could just really go over this and explain why this is being brought forward as a separate contract from our Perkins and Will architecture firm.
Sure.
So the purpose of this is, we have about $33 million worth of work that's happening under the Facility Master Plan in sequence 2.2. And, you know, Mr. Taylor is, you know, busy about 25 hours a day keeping track of everything that's going on. But as a matter of trying to maintain good stewardship and making sure that we're getting good value for our money, we determined what we needed to do was get some assistance on board to help look at just a wide variety of different aspects of the work that's happening to make sure that the things that are being installed are lining up with what the design was, that the items that we're getting are the items that, you know, we respected. And just basically helping to do the due diligence on our part to make sure that we're getting the best value for our money. And so that personally, we work very, very closely with Mr. Taylor and divvying up responsibilities and being in different parts of the district where the work's being done, just to make sure that that's being accomplished. So it's, it's just to get that assistance to know that we're getting what we're, what we're paying for and what is designed.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Grant, aye, Mr. Belcheres absent, Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Medina absent, Ms. Patterson, aye. Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Can I get a motion to approve item 14G from the consent agenda?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have, oops, I have discussion. So this is something I think that would behoove us as a board and as a school district to kind of change our practices. We have a lot going on, and I think there's a lot of good things being accomplished in our district. But I noticed that during some of these really important votes of things that we're doing, like now, voting for new textbooks, voting for a consultant to come in and help all team make sure that our dollars are being spent wisely in our Facility Master Plan, that we're missing people up here. And I'm not about to say who has a valid reason for leaving and not leaving, but I will point out that there are, well, there is some people, person, who likes to stir up a lot of trouble and cause a big bruhaha about some votes, but then leaves for the rest of the staff. And I think that's really unfair to us, those of us who are here. And I think it's really unfair to the people who actually elected us because we are here to vote on items, up or down, it doesn't matter, but we are here to represent. So I would ask us as a board to start including when people leave. When board members leave and what time they leave. Because unless you're really paying attention to the minutes and seeing who's absent for these votes, you don't know, cause people slip out, the camera doesn't always capture it, especially if we're in different venues where you only see, you know, you see like Rodney Theresa and, you know, just a few of us. So I just wanna point that out for the public, I wanna point it out for myself, I wanna point it out for everyone who stays to the end of these meetings and who watches to the end of these meetings at home, that, you know, you're appreciated, your time is appreciated. But important things happen up here, and you might not think they're important because people aren't arguing about them, and that's not the case. Important and good work is being done to the end of this meeting. And I just want the minute, the minutes to reflect those of us who are staying to do the work.
That's, that's a really good point, Amanda. And, and to that point, like, I really want us to get better at promoting the kind of routine, but really important work that's being done. Oh, we renewed, you know, textbooks. I mean, okay, big deal, everyone renewed textbooks, but it's a big deal in proviso. This Black History course is, sounds absolutely amazing. And I really want us to get the word out, cause all, all anyone really listens to is if people are shouting and screaming at each other, then that, that hits the newspaper. But when we do this sort of quote-unquote mundane excellent work, it doesn't, it doesn't translate to the community.
And I think that's, another good thing is that, really good things that are happening are either being lost or not paid attention to. Like, for example, the, when we're looking at the renewals of our contracts with the Beauty Academy and Erskine Reeves, like, I remember, you know, Rodney, you're talking about 2017 when we came in, those numbers from 2017, I remember us having a discussion about, we're paying all this money for kids to attend these, you know, academies, outside academies, and they weren't finishing them, and such a low number were getting their licenses. So it was wasting the money and the effort put in. And so to look at this now and say that, okay, 100% have completed a course, and, you know, this many, 70% now have their licenses in this field, that's pretty incredible. And I don't want that to get lost, because these are the kinds of things that make a difference, that impact the lives of our kids and our district. And I think that's really important. So that's why I wanted to pull the minutes, not because I have any issue with the minutes, they're totally accurate. I just think they could be more accurate if we're recording if and when people are leaving early and not voting on the things that still need our attention.
Great. We can discuss that, Doc, possibly have to retreat as it, how to be, how we would go forward with that in, in the best manner. Sam did let me know that he would have to leave early, and sometimes things come up.
Right.
So, yeah, we wanna make sure.
Right, I'm not, I'm not saying that.
But he let me know, and it's just courtesy, you know, if you're, when you guys are running late, you'll text me and let me know, it's just courtesy. I would've done the same thing when you guys were president or whoever will be the president afterwards, because we're responsible for starting the meetings on time and people are looking at us to keep it going. So I thank you so much for bringing that up, Amanda, that is extremely important. I, I'm not even gonna step on it anymore, you, you, great job. Any other discussion on G? If not, Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Sure, Ms. Grant, aye, Mr. Belcheres absent, Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Medina absent, Mrs. Patterson? Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Old business.
Can I have old business?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me take this opportunity to, on behalf of Latoya Peters, which is Antoine Peter, Antoine Snake Peters' wife and family. Thank proviso for affording the family an opportunity to funeralize Snake, who wasn't employed here in the district for some time. There was a comment made, and I pray to God that Ms. Peters was not listening. The facilities can be used by anybody in the district. Ms. Peters did everything that was asked of her as far as filling out all documents that was required to hold that service here. So there was no special treatment given. I know that it was mentioned earlier about the loss of the teacher. Will the teacher be able to do the same thing? If the teacher reached out, I would assume, yes, but if my mind serves me right, I think that those services have already occurred. This was a very difficult time for her. Some of you may know or don't know, I'm at the end of completing what your age science school, and that celebrant was much appreciated by the family. My other concern is, as a parent-student advocate outside of being a board member, I've had an opportunity to work with many families in proviso township. I am concerned, even with my voting for the cosmetology program. Just a couple of months ago, I worked with a grandparent that had some issues with cosmetology. And she talked about how she had been treated to the point that her daughter got involved and expressed the same thing. But this is not the first time I've heard something like that. I would ask that the district, Dr. Henderson, make sure that we are doing our due diligence as a school when dealing with, with our students and, and families. That's, that's very important. With no families, there would be no students at the cosmetology. Thanks.
Do the noting, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson, any other old business? Hearing none, new business?
New business?
Yes, Ms. Kelly.
I would like to propose a teacher, administration, and support staff recognition program. And when I say support staff, I mean all of support staff, from the bus drivers to security, to custodial maintenance, all of the different groups that would come under Support Staff Recognition Program to honor and congratulate our district's hard-working and most dedicated individuals. I'm requesting to form a committee. The committee will be used to create criteria and set guidelines slash requirements for recognition. I do, uh, uh, recognition will start with a picture displayed of the recipient at their respective school for 30 days, one month, with categories beginning in September. And at the end of the month, the picture will be given to the recipient as a, to show appreciation. The categories will be Teacher of the Month, which would, which will end up being Teacher of the Year, Administrator of the Quarter, Administrator of the Year, oh, excuse me, Administrator of the Semester, and Administrator of the Year. All Support Staff of the Month and Support Staff of the Year. With the year ending with a banquet announcing the Teacher of the Year, Administrator of the Year, and Support Staff Member of the Year. These individuals will be awarded a nice gift and possibly other perks to be announced later. So that's what, that's what I'd like to propose.
New business, okay. If it pleases the board, I would like to formulate some instructions to Dr. Henderson and the board can say yea or nay to adopt that proposal by Ms. Kelly. And to, I will, as the person that assigns committees, I would go ahead and approve that committee to be formed with you and Dr. Henderson working on that. Board members are all welcome to join in on that conversation in that committee. And you guys can proceed with that if it pleases the board.
Oh, so this would be like a board-level recognition, people of the buildings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So are we going back to committees now?
This may not be a standing committee.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
And hopefully it will boost the morale.
Let me tell you why.
Knowing that we care.
So the question on the floor is, are we going back to committees? We've never left committees. Committees are not standing. So in the event that any board member requests to formulate or make a proposal to the board through a committee, then I will give you permission to do so. The board agrees to accept the proposal, first of all. So if the board says the proposal is acceptable, then we work it out through committee. And any board member is able to go to that committee. Now, once that's worked out and it's established, the committee goes away. You guys understand?
Right.
So it's not a standing. A standing committee would be something that goes on for perpetuity. But based upon the proposal being accepted by the board, we would have to work those statements that she's discussing in a committee. Once that work is done, we present it to the public, we vote on it, it becomes a part of the policy or whatever, a part of the process of the year, then the committee goes away. The committee dissolves after that. And any board member can do that. Any board member can make a proposal. Any board member can request for a committee to work and look at anything. And that committee is purposeful. Doc will work with you to work that committee out, assign administrator, whatever it takes. Once that work is done, we present it back to the board, and the committee goes away.
I told that.
I mean, that's the way the process works as far, from what I understand.
But if we're, if it's a, if it's a board-level recognition and we're doing it every quarter, semester, year, we're not doing it for just one year, right? We're doing this constantly.
It would be ongoing.
Right. So that means that the committee who takes in these nominations and makes these awards and recognitions is an ongoing committee.
No, the committee wouldn't do that.
But who's deciding then?
The administration would decide that.
But we just said it was a board-level recognition.
But the administration, everything is approved at the board level. The administration makes the recommendations to us. The board's job would be to work out Ms. Kelly's idea with the administration that would administer it. We will not be up here every day to determine and tell them who the administrator, who the teacher, who the support staff person of the area. They would probably decide that. But to establish all of those things, you would have to have a committee. Once that is established, we get off the dance floor and allow Dr. Henderson to do the wishes of the board. So no, once it's established, we will no longer need to establish it again. And it can function. But to get that established, since it's Ms. Kelly's idea, and she's requesting a committee to do so, like any board member can do, then we would want to establish it, work it out, go through the kinks and stuff. Once that's done, we're back to board business, legislating. Doc would be responsible, or whoever he puts in charge, to make sure that that happens. Everybody understand how that works? That's how committees work. So no, we don't get off the dance floor. We don't determine who's the Support Staff Administrator of the Year. No, we don't do that.
No, we don't do that.
We don't do that as board members. What the criteria will be, we can sat some say in that, since it's Ms. Kelly's proposal, and any board member up here can do it. Can go to the committee meeting, all board members can participate in committees and give those instructions, yeah, and give those instructions to Dr. Henderson. And he, his responsibility would be to administer that for us on behalf of the board. But no, we would not be determining or pooling or voting on who gets, no. We wouldn't do that. Any other questions? Any other new business? Okay, then thank you, Ms. Kelly, for that proposal. Hearing none, we have a public hearing for the reclassification pursuant to 105 ILCS-5/1023.8B.
Mr. President, he's not here.
He has not shown up?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm asking you to table the next item.
You want to table it, or do we want to vote it down?
We have to table it.
But he didn't show up?
The superintendent is making a regulation.
You have to table it.
You don't have to table it.
He's back in the house, Rodney.
No, hold on, hold on. So we should table it?
Yes, sir.
He requested to be here.
Is he, is he requesting a second public hearing?
No, he's requesting a, the first, he, he, this would be the first public hearing. Remember, he requested to address the board, he did that.
Oh, because it sounds, I thought our adjourned in a closed hearing. And then he went public and said the same thing publicly, he said in the hearing.
But that wasn't an official public hearing. He just made some comments. But he wants an official public hearing, which he requested within the timeframes, I guess. Okay, so we'll table it. Can I get a motion to table, item 18, board determination on reclassification of administrative employee?
Some.
Second, Ms. Grant, please call, I'm sorry, discussion? Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Ms. Medina, absent, Ms. Patterson? We're tabling the board determination on requisitation of the administrative employee. Ms. Grant, aye, Mr. Bautieris, absent, Mr. Wagner?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second, Ms. Grant, please call the roll.
Everybody?
Aye.
Thank you, Proviso.